...A White Christmas, with every Christmas card I write. May your days be merry and bright, and may all your Christmases be white. I'm dreaming of a white Christmas, just like the ones I used to know. Where the treetops listen and children listen to hear sleigh bells in the snow. I'm dreaming of a white Christmas, with every Christmas card I write. May your days be merry and bright, and may all your Christmases be white.
And the words are right there.
Deck the halls with boughs of holly, fa la 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 la, la 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 la. 'Tis the season to be jolly, fa la 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 la, la 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 la. Don't we now our gay apparel, fa la la la, la 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 la? Troll the ancient yuletide carol, fa la 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 la, la 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 la. See the blazing yule before us, fa la 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 la, la 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 la. Strang the harp and join the chorus, fa la 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 la, la 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 la. Follow me in merry measure, fa la la la, la 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 la. While I tell of yuletide treasure, fa la la la, la 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 la. Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way. Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh, hey! Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way. Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh. Dashing through the snow, in a one-horse open sleigh. O'er the hills we go, laughing all the way. Bells on bobtails ring, making spirits bright. What fun it is to ride and sing a sleighing song tonight! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way. Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh, hey! Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way. Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh. We wish you a merry Christmas, we wish you a merry Christmas, we wish you a merry Christmas and a happy new year. Good tidings we bring to you and your kin. Good tidings for Christmas and a happy new year. We wish you a merry Christmas, we wish you a merry Christmas, we wish you a merry Christmas and a happy new year.
Merry Christmas, Ron. Thank you.
And as Santa would say, "Ho, ho, ho, Merry Christmas!"
Merry Christmas.
No.
Did I miss something?
No, you missed something, but you didn't miss much.
I mean, I heard all this. I was there.
Oh, okay, very good, very good.
Oh, no, 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 you don't want that.
Call meeting order. We are all present. Item two, at the Commissioner's request, discuss any item of concern on the regular session agenda of December the 18th, 2018.
I have some questions about the casino stuff, but I assume we'll have time to do that upstairs.
Yes, we can ask them. I'll try to answer them, but the chief...
We're going to do it down here.
You want to do it downstairs?
And upstairs.
Well, we can do it upstairs, I think it'll be fine upstairs.
I think we need to do it down here and upstairs.
Okay. Trevor, my question was just about the, because I had, it was asked to me by some constituents about the option about the percentage, the sales tax, or the, not sales tax, but the percentage.
Yes.
How that would be verifiable, how would we be able to verify that we were getting the portion we were supposed to be getting.
That's a good question. Currently, when we collect sales tax from businesses in the city, we rely on the Oklahoma Tax Commission to collect it. They do some degree of enforcement, but we typically, we just accept what they give us unless we have a question. With the casino, what the agreement, I believe, says, Carol, and you can help me here, is that they will collect 4.6% of non-gaming revenues and pay it to the city. And I don't know if we have a provision in there to allow us to verify that.
Yes, we can look at, let's see, it indicates that we can look at the, at their, has the right to review within reason receipts.
One of the questions constituents may have too is why is it 4.6 when the city's sales tax is 4.1?
Well, right, for the county hotel, I'm assuming that goes for, that's our chunk that goes to the hotel.
Does any, does any audit audit them?
It would be up to us on the agreement with having the right to go in there and look at that. Whether or not they do an audit per se, I don't know. But by what I just read, I think we would have the ability to go in and question them and look at it.
What would be the non-gaming revenue?
Oh, drinks and...
Souvenir sales, yeah.
They're not going to serve alcohol.
No, they will serve food.
Now, that's not in the agreement.
It's peanuts, I mean, it's the, the, that 4.6%, it's going to be 4.6% if not a whole lot, I mean.
Right.
It's not...
It's going to be the gaming stuff.
Yeah, no, this isn't the, I think it's a bad deal from outside, but I don't think this is the part of it that's not going to generate more than a little bit of cash, because it's never going to be a big sales tax generating site.
Well, and of course, this raises a question that I talked to Gerald about a little bit this afternoon, is that, you know, when you say a casino, casino can be a lot of things. It could be the wind, you know, the big one down there by the state line, or it could be a little double ride trailer, like I've seen in some parking lots over around, up around Ponca City. And I want to know what kind of casino they're planning on building. I wouldn't, I wouldn't approve any agreement if I didn't know what the casino was going to be like.
Well, they showed us renderings at that last meeting.
Well, I want to see renderings again. Now, I mean, to me, the agreement should explain what kind of an operation it's going to be. And you say there's going to be food, I don't know if it's going to be food, I don't know whether, they said they wouldn't sell off alcohol, but...
No, but they said at the meeting that they were going to have a restaurant.
And, and I should, I do not, we, we told them that if they were not sure for all time, they were not going to have alcohol, they should not put it in the agreement. So it is not in the agreement. So there could be alcohol, because we didn't want to get into something.
Well, now, now, hold on. Now, what they told us is, this is a picture of a building that it might be something like.
Yes, might be something like that.
There are no guarantees as to any quality in here, there's no guarantees to anything. In fact, what they told us last time was that their restaurant wouldn't be much more than a, than a snack bar like you'd find at, you know, a football game.
They, they will go through the site plan development, and then they'll have to do...
Whoa, whoa, two of you talking at the same time.
And we have the ability and the approval, so...
Under what standard, though? I mean, because what we are doing, I mean, that was my biggest question, is the language, the city, see where is it? We have the agreement to review the site plan, but under what standard of review? I mean, if we've already agreed, they can do kind of what they want, and that they're only subject to our regulations for purposes of enforcing this agreement, are they saying they're going to subject ourselves to all our zoning and site plan regulations?
Well, they are, they understand that they're going to have to do the improvements to get out to the highway, and that they are going to have to pass our site plan requirements.
But, but where is that in here?
Well, it says that they have to get their site plan approved if we want to add, bolster that, but they will go through the site plan review process and have it be approved by the MAPC and by the Board of Commissioners, and they can't build it unless it's approved. So, you guys are the, you know, how strong do you want to be? If you want the casino and want to approve the agreements.
Tonight, what you'll have an opportunity to do is vote yes or no, or table it, if you want, or we'll make amendments to it, however you want. It's not a perfect agreement, we worked to come up with as best we could.
Yeah.
Who wrote the agreement?
Carol and Clint.
Yes, Clint provided the agreement, and then I added to it.
Carol, what is, exactly what does it mean? When we had the last meeting with them in the council chambers, I kept hearing the word sovereign.
Ah, okay. That means that if they get the land, and I am not an expert, but if they get the land put into trust for the gaming, for their casino, that that land is no longer city vena in the city limits, it is sovereign, and they can do what they want, and that's why it's important that they waive sovereign immunity, and we're going to require them to do the improvements. We have sovereign immunity too. It's been chipped away a lot since 1980, but we also are sovereign. It just isn't quite the same. We're a political subdivision of the state, but we do have the political tort claims, limits and stuff, and we do have bits of sovereignty left.
So how long would that last?
The sovereignty, the sov, yeah. If they, well, unless they take it out of the trust, but, yes. A sovereign means, is another word for king. It's left over for...
If it comes from a foreign country.
Yeah.
Once it's tribal trust land, what she says, it'd be tribal trust land forever unless, I guess, they decided...
Yeah. We do have a right of first refusal. If it ends up cratering, before they could sell it to anyone, we get an option.
So they don't give it, they don't give us, I mean, there's not a valuation standard there?
No.
I mean, they could be sold to another tribe or to another entity for some, I mean...
Oh, right.
Yes.
Yes.
The Cherokee tribe come in and offer them some crazy price that, so we get a first refusal on, but we can never afford, whereas, you know, in a perfect world, we would have some...
Yes.
Ability to repurchase it for some appraised value or fair market value, not some, if we wanted to control who the next entity was.
Yes.
Well, the provision that bothers me is a provision that if we once give our approval, we can't then rescind it without being subject to penalty. And, and that, to me, is too open-ended. I mean, I, I would be agreeable to give them some period of time. Our approval would be for a specified period of time, but they, we may be waiting one of them five years to get this process started. There, there's no, there's no, and this agreement, it doesn't indicate there's any time.
Well, that, that is true. It is tied to the application, the application 20, or section 20 application. But, so that, you know, if, once they're approved, I don't think they need our approval, but if we started, you know, doing something, it wouldn't apply. It's, it's limited to this application period, but the application period could go on for quite some time. And certainly, it will go on past the mayor's term, I would assume.
In my, in my, it will. But anyway, but, and then to me, if, if some other, if someone else came in and offered us a better deal, we wouldn't be able to take it, because we'd have given these people approval, even, even though...
Well, for that tract of land, but I think that that tract of land, they have that under contract, but I don't know for sure. And do not read the fact that this is on the agenda, as we're saying, this is a good idea and you should do it. I just...
Well, I like the money. I mean, you know, I'd, I'd like to get the money, but I, I think we need to be careful, because the city's entered into a number of agreements that I didn't think particularly favor us, and I don't want to do that again.
Ron, I think it's a, I think the money number is, I think it's a...
Carrot.
It is a carrot, but I don't think it's a particularly valuable carrot. I think it's a sexy number, but I think the, where the money comes from is the problem. It's not like this is $11 million over seven years that will come from outside the community or from the tribe, from some other funding resource. I mean, first of all, this is a pretty tiny tribe, it's not like there's a lot of money from them to start out with, as compared to some of the other tribes that are, I mean, gaming establishments. But the money will be coming from Enid citizens. They will be taking a, I mean, casinos make a boatload of money, that's the thing, they're really good at it. They are under very little restriction to prey on gambling addicts and poor and the elderly, and, and so the money that's coming to city of Enid, yeah, we get a check, but it's dirty money, we don't want it. We, and it's also likely to cannibalize from other sources of sales tax. The folks who are gambling are not going to...
Can I help you?
Yeah.
They're not getting any new revenue streams. If you look at statistics and the data that's out there, what happens is...
I, I'm aware of all this stuff, and I've heard, I've got to call them the same people you have. But, but to me, there's also thousands of people that live in this community, this vicinity, that are spending their money in casinos already.
Sure.
I mean, don't rule that out. I mean, it's, it's not like they're going to be getting people that never spent a dime in a casino before.
Gotcha.
Right.
But the residual problems that come from having casino in your area, what tends to happen is the people from those communities in that area, crime goes up in those communities, people tend to, because they, 40% of the revenue that comes from casinos comes from people who are addicted to gambling, they tend to find other ways in order to be able to generate revenue. It's not by finding new jobs, it's by stealing and things of that nature, so those, those problems we take on too. Once all that money's, that new money that we, that's been spent, we still get to deal with those residual issues, which means we now develop new programs in order to be able to fix these new problems that we've created, because we brought that now into our community.
And further, I mean, the idea that if, that it's going to happen one way or another, I keep hearing from folks, I think is, I think it's wildly overestimating these folks' ability to get a deal without our approval. I don't think the new governor has any incentive to approve something over our disapproval, over the disapproval of our local house rep, over the disapproval of folks like Senator Langford, I mean, we are not without support here. I don't think Kevin Stitt is going to go override the city vena's desire theory. I think we have a legitimate opportunity to stop this thing's in its tracks, and that money, Ron, is great, but it's not money without a cost, and if it costs...
Well, you know, see, I know, I know what you're talking about, but...
But why is that not a problem for you?
It's not a problem, because...
Because everybody's a grown-up and they are responsible for their actions, and if you don't want to gamble, don't go to a casino, the same way if you don't want to be drunk, don't go to a bar.
Tammy, you know absolutely well that the life is not that simple, that the world's not that simple, and that access to a...
People need to be responsible for their actions.
No, but I...
It's not, it's not a bar owner's fault that somebody's a drunk.
No, it is, it's called dram shop liability, I mean, there is a concept for that.
But there's communities, you know, a lot larger than we are, Tulsa, Oklahoma City, go all over the state, there's casinos everywhere. And, and I, I don't know that whether they're, maybe they're rolling in crime, maybe they're doing a lot worse than we are, maybe we're the only smart people in the country that can, that don't want a casino, but they're, Tulsa must have about five gigantic casinos right now.
Here's the balance, as I see it, Ron. We can, we can do a service to a lot of people, or we can, and, and limit access to something that hurts a significant number of people. I don't think there's any dispute that some people have a gambling addiction, and that access to casinos is likely to make that addiction, or the consequences from that addiction worse. We can all agree that that occurs at least in some amount. We can decide as a community, or as this body, four votes, can say, you know what, we understand some people will gamble responsibly, but it's not worth it to allow those people to gamble responsibly, if we are going to also cause harm to the minority, arguably, of gambling addicts, that, you know what, we're not going to make it easier for those people to receive that harm, and sure, we're going to deprive a few folks who are otherwise responsible gamblers of this opportunity, but you know what, it's worth the cost.
Like making a whole class run, because one...
I wouldn't even go that far as to say it's the depriving them. They still have the ability to go to other casinos.
Oh, and they do.
And take their money to other towns.
They definitely have the ability in order to be able to go do that, but we have the ability to be able to say whether or not we want to be able to put that in, in, in our backyard, and whether, particularly if you look at, again, the statistics and the data and the studies that have been done in terms of what this does, and the predatory nature, the predatory nature of those machines, and what happens to people with the addictive nature that goes along with them, whether or not we want to put that right behind churches, right next to ballparks, right around the corner from, you know, areas that, that have already been struggling in order to be able to move ahead as it is.
Well, I think if you follow this argument, though, to its logical conclusions, then we'd immediately go out and start trying to close down the bars and, and everything else, and places to sell tobacco and all of those kind of things, because they're, they're doing that here too, to make, to much greater degree than this is going to be.
I'm very familiar with the slippery slope of thought process, and if that, if we want to go that route, we, you know, you're more than welcome to, but we have the ability to make a decision about this particular issue right here, right now. And we can make a decision as a community and say that this is not something, this isn't reflective of who we want to be as a, as a community. We do not want to be able to let in organizations that prey on the, on the weakest and the poorest among us.
I mean, further, there's qualitative difference between, all vices are not created equal. Drinking as a vice, drinking as a, certainly causes addiction by, I think, a much lower, whereas a source of negative consequences associated with addiction. But I think there's a qualitative difference. Further, the...
You think drinking's better than gambling?
I, I think that the regulation and the structure in place under the, under state law is significantly greater to limit access and ability to target problem drinkers, whereas casinos have a blank check to identify an individual as a problem gambler, and, and they have license to target their advertisements, target their services, and prey much more efficiently than I think, and tools and resources to do it. They're really good at it, and that's not something that any of us sitting around here at the table can do anything about. That is a matter of state law and the compact that the tribes have with the state that will be renegotiated at some point in time, but is way above our pay grade.
But you don't think that the alcohol and tobacco companies are good at it either?
I think they're subject to a lot more limitation and regulation that protects people.
I, I don't have any dog in this fight, anyway. I've never lost a dollar in a casino, and I'm not interested in it.
Well, we have a vote.
And I don't care whether it comes or goes, but I, I just, to me, if there's, if there's revenue getting away from us that we should have, I want it.
All money isn't good money.
Right.
I think the other thing... Money's money.
Maybe the other thing to note is, you know, we're looking at economic development, things to draw people to Enid. This little casino that we're talking about is not going to draw anybody to Enid. It's only going to take advantage of the people that are sitting here.
They're going to...
It'll shorten the trip for them to be able to spend the money they don't have to lose. And I, so I don't see it helping us.
It sounds to me, it sounds to me like, based on the conversation you're around the table, that they're in big trouble already.
Well, they have one casino.
No, but I, but I'm saying is, they're not, they're not going to have enough votes here to get, get this recommendation.
Wait just a minute. This tribe has one casino.
It isn't open.
Let me talk.
Sure, go ahead, excuse me.
They have one casino in Telequa, Oklahoma. It has been closed for five years because the Cherokee Nation, which has 300,000 tribesmen, filed suit against them and shut them down. This tribe has 13,000, and they, they have been shut down for five years. You know how many casinos they own? I took all this out of the proposal that they brought us. There's, there, I'm not concerned, well, I am concerned, that everything is exaggerated in what that person gave to us on September the 18th. For instance, they say they're going to have 157 employees, 200 full-time employees. I, I think that is greatly exaggerated. They, they deal with, they still have to deal with the Bureau of Indian Affairs, and that is a Department of, the Department of Interior.
Yeah, I've told people, I don't think there's any chance that they'll get this casino built, I really don't.
That, that may be...
Even with our recommendation.
But if it does get built, and we get the notice that they're going to phase it out, they don't owe us any of that $80,000, $98,000, some of that.
I know.
That's, that's a lot of money, and we could use that money, but it's going to last for 10 years if they don't sell the casino. It's going to last for 10 years, that's a very short term, against forever.
Well, and the other part, Ron, if you think that...
And we're not going to, we're not going to, we're not going to get any money after, after the first seven years.
I mean, Ron, if you think that it's not, doesn't have a snowball's chance anyway, then there is value in saying tonight, no, we, we don't want you here, in hopes that we scare them off and they, you know, flame out early and, and the property isn't tied up and set there as a big, you know, blighted chunk for the, however many years it takes them to either get approval or denial. I mean, I hope that if, if it does fail tonight, that that encourages them to abandon this particular project and take their money elsewhere, and then maybe somebody can make better use of that property.
Another thing that is overly exaggerated from their original proposal, their gambling area is a 100-mile radius of Enid, Oklahoma.
Just optimistic.
And that number of population is 930,000. And they claim 370,000 of them will be in Enid. That's 1,000 a day. Not going to happen, that is totally exaggerated.
That defines every statistic that's out there.
930,000, yeah, 930,000 is Oklahoma City.
Every statistic out that, that's out there that talks about when a casino was built and where the draw comes from, the largest reach that you will find will tell you is about 70 miles at best, and even then, you're still not getting, exactly, that's...
And you only go back if you win. If you lose, you look for another casino.
But even at 70 miles, you're talking about the larger casinos. We're not looking at one of the larger casinos, we're looking at something that's significantly smaller, which means they're going to be targeting our, our immediate surroundings.
My, my only interest, and I'm, I'm no advocate for casino, I, like I said, I don't care if it's built or not, I, the only time I've ever been in one is to stop and eat a hamburger, go to the bathroom, but it is that, that if, if they do build it, I want to get some money out of it. And, and to me, if we don't make an agreement with them, we probably, it probably won't. But I, you know, and, and I, but, you know, that, that's somebody else's problem. Bill and I are going on down the road here in a few months, and somebody else will make all these brilliant decisions.
Well, the right of first refusal, if, if they were to close down and not sell to somebody else, the city of Enid has the right of first refusal.
Right, it could be stronger.
We need to, we need to manage water and not a casino.
Yes, we wouldn't have the right, we, we could package it and sell it to someone else, or we could re, re-purpose it, but...
And we could open the city vena casino?
No, I don't think so, not, not right, unless something really changes.
I call that a lose-lose situation, not a win-win.
You know, it just says discuss on the agenda.
I think we have.
We are.
Yeah, I mean, all I'm saying is, there wasn't a recommendation of approve or disapprove, it's just there to...
It's not coming out of committee or...
I think there, to me, there are more negatives than positives.
Honestly, it's reminiscent to me of, on military bases, of the predatory lenders that sit right outside the gate, that charge absorbent rates for, for short-term loans for, for military members. No, it's not illegal and they should be responsible enough, but they're targeting people who are in a situation that, that are, that are looking for a way to get out of it, and so it's, again, they're preying on our community, and we have the ability to say no.
We've got some of those here in town, too, I think. Those predatory lenders, we've got those here already, too.
Correct, and we, the, the federal government made laws that they have to be a certain distance away from our, from our military bases, because they were preying on our soldiers and our troops, and so rather than us making a decision that, that brings the, bring another predator into the community to be able to, again, attack those who, who could know better, but not necessarily, we can make a decision to say no. That's not that far in the stretch.
Yeah. Anybody else? Anybody else?
What's I, uh, I, uh?
An update on.
We talked a lot, my computer ran out of.
Update on Fall Lake Water Supply Program?
Is that what?
Chris.
Chris and Brad here.
Glad you're here.
Glad to be here.
Okay, as you know, we've, uh, we've launched off into the next phase and we're gonna do a little update on where we are. Um, the things that we're gonna do is we'll do a little recap and then we'll go back and visit our demand chart. Then we'll talk a little bit pipeline construction and then again about easements.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Mayor, commission. Gerald, that's a nice hat.
Thank you.
That's good.
I just saw one taking off, my hair's messed up now.
I like, I like it. Um, real quickly, I.
We have more if you want one.
I'll pass, Mayor, thank you. Uh, real quickly, just a recap of, uh, where we've been, where we're at and where we're going. Um, you guys, uh, may recall, we've, we've completed two phases of this four-phase program. Concept development was a big component of phase one. Preliminary engineering, not the full engineering, just the preliminary design up to thirty percent complete was the major effort in phase two. You'll recall that that preliminary engineering was for the full build-out, which, uh, came in at about four hundred and seventy-five million dollars, seventy-one, four hundred and seventy-one million dollars. Um, the backend of phase two was to develop a phasing plan, to put together an executable, affordable program. And, uh, and that's what we did to culminate phase two. What we're doing in this current phase, phase three, is taking that thirty percent design, that, those decisions that we made in that phased plan and taking them from thirty percent all the way to a hundred percent or bid-ready documents. Now, some things that are going on kinda behind the scenes or in parallel with that major design effort is the land acquisition process, continuation of environmental permitting that started in phase two. And then the actual production of the specifications and front-end documents, con- contract documents to accompany that final design. But not bidding, just preparing the documents, getting it ready to bid. The next phase, phase four, it would begin with that bidding step, move quickly into construction. Uh, our role would continue to, we would continue on as construction management and, and observation of the field activities to ensure that, uh, those contractors were, uh, constructing those improvements according to their design. Um, also the startup and commissioning of the new program, pumps, water treatment plant, storage, all that good stuff, make sure that it, it operates as it was intended to during the design. Lou will be looking for a lot of help from you in that regard. Um, and then finally, program closeout, documentation, closeout and so forth. So, does anybody have any questions about what we've done so far, what we're doing in this phase or where we're going?
Who's gonna be doing the final design?
Good, that's a great question, we have solicited, uh, requests for proposals from final design consultants, we have.
Garver's not gonna be doing it.
We're, we're, at this point, we are not, we have some final design components that we're responsible for, but a majority of the program is currently slated to be final designed by others.
Those things that are common across the program, uh, valves, blow-off, air valves, things of that nature, we want control over those. So, when we field this system, we don't have to maintain four or five different valve types to ma- to ma- do maintenance on the pipeline, that kinda stuff.
How much is left in the contingency plan, or how much is in the conti- contingency?
The actual dollar amount, I, I don't know, Mayor, but.
It's a percentage.
Yeah, it ranges from, depending upon which piece of infrastructure it is, whether it's the pipeline or whether it's the water plant or the intake, ranges between, you know, twelve to fifteen percent, uh, actually, some of it may be as low as ten percent, uh, on the pipeline, uh, contingency still remaining.
Ten percent's thirty million dollars.
Yeah. But again, you know, contingency is something that is probably gonna get used at some point, I mean, it's there, it's there, it's a dollar amount for a reason, so.
It's gonna get used in phase three, land acquisition. We've, we've proven that in Enid.
So, Ron, there, there's, we've received eighteen different proposals from final design consultants, um, your city staff is evaluating those as we speak to make recommendations on which of those consultants, how many of those consultants will be added to our team. Now, we'll still provide design oversight, plan review and, and program management services continuing on. And like Chris mentioned and I mentioned, we will, we will be providing some design elements as well.
And the date to, are we, are we showing the design, final design date going clear out to twelve twenty, you think, to get?
I'll show you, there's a, there's a schedule at the end of this, I'll show you where that anticipated, uh, end date is.
Okay, this is our demand chart, as you can see, just something you ought to be used to, um, when we started this project, our program, what we did is we designed to this capacity up here, that's the full build-out. Then, as we got to, into the phasing, what we're planning on constructing is enough to meet this demand. So, as we grow, we have the capability to get up to this amount of water, but if we never do, or if it takes a long time, we're covered.
Chris, at what point in time do we go to the Oklahoma Water Resources Board for the big loan?
For the big loan? Probably in late nineteen.
It's about a year from now, I think, is our timeframe. John Wolf will be here tonight, maybe he's here somewhere already, uh, to talk about it upstairs on the FAB note that we'll be talking about.
So, just to kinda drill down a little bit more about that demand chart that Chris just, just talked about, this kinda shows the, what, what's actually gonna get built? And, and, and it's life expectancy based on your current projected growth rate and current, uh, water demands, which is that, again, that green line that Chris pointed out earlier. Um, about you'll, you should reach, um, the intended or the rated capacity of the water treatment plant in about twenty fifty-three. And then the, uh, the necessity to expand the water treatment plant, uh, intake and add the intermediate booster pump station would be uh, well out into, uh, the future, some, you know, twenty eighty-seven, so it'd be, again, like you mentioned earlier, Ron, it'll be somebody else's decision at that point too. Not just in May of next year, but well out into the future, right? Um, we thought it would be interesting, uh, just to show you a couple of construction, uh, photographs of what you might expect for a big pipeline project. Um, you're gonna see a lot of trucks, um, right now, we see a lot of, a lot of trucks carrying wind turbines, right? Um, and a lot of trucks carrying water out of the oil and gas fields, but, uh, during, uh, the construction phase, we're gonna see a lot of trucks carrying pipe. Uh, seventy miles of pipe is a lot of pipe.
At what point in the, and I guess it's not this phase, but it'll be the, I guess it'll be the next phase, but how far out are we from being able to lock down our, the cost of the pipe itself, I mean, that's the piece that's scaring me a little bit.
Welcome to my world.
Yeah, I know. What, when will we be able to lock that down?
Actually, we're starting the process of gathering that information on what's out there, what's the availability, what do the manufacturers and the producers of pipes see, and we anticipate that come summertime, we'll be.
Really, that's, steel prices are going crazy. Well, I mean, I, you know, they've gone up so much lately, I mean.
So, I mean, they don't go down.
Yeah.
They never go down.
So, but we need to know that to be able to get that decision in front of you.
Okay.
So, we can, if, if, you know, worst-case scenario, steel prices are way out of line and we, and it blows through the budget, we gotta come up with a backup plan.
Garden hose.
Exactly, those Walmart specialty.
Bunch of garden hoses.
To me, to me, the nice thing about the entire project is ninety-eight percent of it's gonna be buried below ground and you won't see it when it goes into operation.
Absolutely. Hey, hey, that's a really good question, Ben, there's, there's still some, some decisions to be made as, as far as the timing, but also the material. I mean, you know, we haven't, we haven't decided that, hey, steel's the only way we have to go, we've, we've got.
Do they have a PVC?
Well, PVC might not be the best option, but, but concrete, uh, PVC's acceptable, it's just in this case with the pressures that we'll be running, it, it may not be feasible for the entire pipeline, but concrete pipe, ductile iron pipe, so we still have those options available to us and we can, we can continue the design process without making that material selection yet and kinda see what the market continues to do, so. Good, very good question. Um, so you're gonna see a lot of deliveries, um, out in the, uh, in the open areas, in the, in the pasture land. We can do what we call open-cut construction, which is there on the right, and you'll see a long channel where the pipe goes and some cases, that may be nine or ten feet deep with about four to five feet of cover on top of the, top of the pipe, uh, new ground, that's what cover means, new ground on top of the pipe. Uh, you'll see a spoil pile laid on one side of the channel that you see there to the left, and then you'll see all those sticks or joints of pipe laying off to the right for miles and miles and miles. Um.
Do you have any pipers curved?
We don't, we, we, we could, maybe a little bit, you know, it's some of the bores, but not, not, not really, no. But this is some more, uh, this is urban construction, you guys see this all the time, in fact, there's some of that going on over on, in, in the Cleveland area, there has been, I think, in the last few weeks. Um, you see a perspective there, that's a little bit larger diameter pipe than what, uh, what we have on this project.
That about valve that we're gonna have, is that like a?
There will be some large, large valves like that, now that's laying on its side.
Okay.
So, you could tilt it up ninety degrees, when they install it, they'll tilt that up ninety degrees so that the operators can put their valve stem on it. Um, these are just some different compaction methods for pipe. Uh, we have here represented in, by color, um, eight different segments of the pipeline, these will be eight independent projects with an independent designer, uh, an independent contractor, now, that doesn't mean that one designer can't do more than one, or one contractor can't build more than one. But, uh, for, for the approximate seventy-mile corridor, we are breaking that up into eight different projects. Now, some of these are approximately the same length, but there is some strategy associated with where one segment ends and another one begins. For instance, you'll notice this blue segment right here has two Arkansas River crossings. That's a type of construction methodology that's different than out here in the open pasture, uh, paralleling a overhead power line. So, there is some strategy behind where these segments are, are located, or their endpoints. Uh, easement acquisition, uh, I have with me tonight our sub, subcontractor, uh, Smith Roberts Land Surveying Services, I'm sorry, Smith Roberts Land Services. And, uh, just a, a few fun stats, now, these change all the time, so it's hard to take a snapshot of where we at, we are at in the process with two hundred and thirty-one raw water pipeline parcels to acquire. Uh, letters, offer letters and negotiations are ongoing all the time, but, uh, the percentage of the legal descriptions that we have prepared uh, are at or above ninety percent. Um, we have, uh, percent of notices that are sent out, a total twelve percent, and actual offers delivered, uh, people now actually have offers in hand. Uh, but that's, that's only at seven percent as of, as of today.
Can we take a moment and introduce the Smith Roberts people, particularly the folks that are gonna be in the living rooms?
Steve, you got a minute? Craig? Both of you get up here.
Sure.
If you would please introduce yourself and what you do for.
Okay.
Smith Roberts.
I'm, I'm Craig Cunningham with Smith Roberts Land Services, I'm the project manager on this particular project and in charge of all of the operations in Oklahoma for our company. Uh, the agent that'll be in the, in the, uh, living rooms, his name's Steve Smith, he, he can tell you more about himself, but he's an OSU grad, uh, former professor, knows agriculture, a lot of the land that we're going to see, the people that are going to be communicated with are going to be people dealing with agricultural land. And so, uh, he has the expertise to sit down and talk the same language they do. Uh, we've been with staff multiple times and, uh, I, I feel very comfortable with Steve's, uh, uh, presence in the living room. And he understands and has been working with us, uh, through the process of knowing what is necessary to acquire the right-of-way. And, uh, we are just really hitting the ground, uh, we, we've, uh, gotten some offer letters, Steve's already got a few of them out. We're gonna get a lot more, uh, two hundred and thirty-one according to the, 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 the paper. And, uh, we're gonna move forward on starting to sit, sit down in living rooms and start acquiring some right-of-way. I'll let Steve talk, talk to you.
Craig's already introduced me, I don't, I really don't know what else to say.
Sorry.
I'll be glad to answer any questions, I, I have met with, or talked to, communicated with, uh, oh, probably thirty, maybe, maybe forty people that are impacted by the line, that being, uh, owners, uh, tenant farmers, uh, and, 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 and some others. Uh, generally, the, uh, the presence on the line on their property is, many of them will consider it an inconvenience. But in, in working with them, uh, if any of you own some land, I've, I've, I've got a little bit, but, uh, many of these people understand that, that with the privilege of owning land, there is also an obligation that comes with that. Uh, in that, uh, electricity and, or, or power and transportation and oil and gas, all of it is dependent upon easements crossing this property. Uh, most people understand that, uh, there are a few that would rather have the alignment somewhere else. Um, still, that's, that's my job to try to convince them that, uh, that, uh, once the construction is, is, is finished, uh, it won't have that much of an, of an impact on. Beyond that, I'll, I'd be glad to ask, answer any questions.
How do you decide, um, uh, who to talk to first, or, I mean, do you start at one end and work your way to the other, or do you get the bigger pieces first, or?
Okay, there's, that's really a two-part question, the strategy is to start at the lake and work this way.
Okay.
Um, there are those that we have needed access to, to finish some of our work, they're in the middle and we've already jumped on them.
All right.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah.
And, and understand, you know, for, for what we've decided to spend on easements, you know, we've got about two-point-seven million for easement cost and a li- little over three million to pay for construction damages, cause that's two parts of the same, same deal with the landowner. Easement cost, construction damages. And one of the things that we like that Steve's doing for us is, he's gathering some of those preferences, uh, and trust me, every farmer has his own. And, but you have to have some way of writing that down, making sure it gets documented and put in the construction contracts. So, when the construction contractor comes through and does his job, he knows what he's supposed to do and it's in writing.
Is Smith Robinson preparing the right-of-way agreements and surface damage agreements, or?
That, yeah, I can answer that. Uh, we, over the period of time back in, in November and December and January, we were tasked with, uh, providing the city with, with an idea, a, a concept of what would be necessary, we've run it in front of council and, and, uh, they've looked at it multiple times. Uh, we've come up with something that everybody feels comfortable with at this point in time, it's a standard form for everyone. Uh, as far as a permanent easement, as far as purchasing where the pipeline itself will be. And then an area, as, uh, uh, Michael explained, there is a temporary area like the spoil where it, that, that, the, what we call temporary construction easement. That area is, is also being dealt with, it has a separate area, cause it's not a filed document, it is, we're basically renting the land for a time to put, do the construction, once it is, it goes away. But the permanent easement will be filed at the courthouse and that, like I say, that verbiage has been looked at multiple times.
I more mean, when, when property owners, I mean, I, I negotiate a lot of those.
I understand.
And, and we always have, you know, our own addendum, or, you know, we wanna switch these things around, when, when the property owners are wanting their own changes or language, is our council reviewing those, or are you folks reviewing those, or how is that?
Oh, yes, to your question, yes, yes.
Got it, okay.
We will make recommendations and then obviously, anything that comes, ultimately will come back to this group. Y'all will sign off on everything that we have, that's in the protocol, that, that it will be presented to y'all, obviously, it will have already been reviewed. And then, uh, uh, you know, then it comes for you and it's signed off by, by this, by this group.
Thank you.
Tell me about the inspectors that inspect the welding and the.
That would be his question.
And do you do it on, do you do it on every pipe, like they do on the oil and gas?
Would you repeat it, please, Mayor, repeat the question, please?
Tell me, talk a little more about the inspectors that inspect the pipe when it's fitted together.
Okay, so like, first like weld and steel pipe.
Just like they do in the oil and gas industry.
Absolutely, yeah, so we have to, they have to provide.
This is water.
They have to provide, uh, certified welders, and so we make sure that their credentials meet the requirements for that type of pipe and those type of welds, you know, that type of pressure and so forth, and then our inspectors in the field are capable of determining whether or not that weld meets criteria as, as defined in our specifications for putting those pipes together. And a lot of that's based on, on national standards. as, as defined in our specifications for putting those pipes together. And a lot of that's based on, on national standards, uh, AWWA standards and so forth. And then if it's not steel pipe, if there's a joint, um, a flange, um, even with the steel pipe actually, the pipe will undergo a pressure test. And it will have to hold pressure, uh, regardless of the material that we end up moving, selecting. There'll be, there'll be a fairly large army of, uh, construction inspectors out there.
Say that again.
There'll be a fairly large army of construction inspectors, people that work for us through, through Michael, that take care of, is it put in the ground right, is it bedded properly, is it welded properly, covered properly, compaction, all that.
Good, good question.
Okay, the, I think this is our last slide, uh, just a program schedule update. Um, here we are at, nearing the end of twenty eighteen. Design consultant selection is underway. I mentioned we had eighteen proposals come in. Topo survey is also underway. This is the topographical survey on top, uh, for the pipeline. Easement acquisition is underway and all of these items, these two items here will be occurring in parallel, uh, with the final design. And Ron, you mentioned, you asked the question earlier, when will this final design culminate? Well, there's eight pipeline projects. There's an intake project. There's a water plant project and there's a distribution project on Chestnut. So some of those projects will be designed up here in this front end and they can move into construction before the rest of the project is designed. So we're gonna stagger, stagger those eleven projects across this, really eighteen.
It'll be the fall of twenty then.
Yeah.
Construction and final designs complete.
Right, about an eighteen months process from, you know, maybe the February timeframe of this year through late summer of twenty twenty.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna miss it all.
Michael, have you figured out how many jobs are gonna be in Enid for the next four years?
Uh, not yet.
For the whole project?
Not, not yet. We could, we could probably put together some, some rough estimates, um, based on this phase right here, the construction phase. Uh, there will be some, uh, minimal job impact during the final design phase from some professional services that are capable of being provided here in, in your town. But most of the labor, uh, will show up down here during the construction phase. It's a little, little premature probably right now, but when those, you know, when those, those pipeline segments of those eight that I showed earlier that are closer to Enid, that's gonna draw on a lot of Enid folks.
You sure and let them know where the impact into that pipe is.
Take that.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Just an observation, you guys have done a lot of these extended pipeline projects. It just strikes me when I look at the timeline, it was like five and a half years from concept to, okay, we're gonna start building, then two years to build it. Is that typical?
Yeah, it's a little bit accelerated on the design phase and the construction phase, but always the case, what takes the longest amount of effort is developing the concept, turning the concept into a plan, and then developing the funding profile for that. How are we gonna fund this mega project, this mega program? And that's kinda what we've been working on for the last, really, three years, is, you know, working on the concept, fine tuning it a little bit with the preliminary engineering, determining what we can afford and then going to the bank, so to speak, our friends at the Water Resources Board. And, uh, so that, yeah, it typically takes a little bit longer on the front end and then we can accelerate a little bit on the back. And there's also some other ways to accelerate schedule that we'll, we'll talk about later if we need to. And the schedule is intentionally aggressive. Um, for these kind of programs, time is money and the longer you lay it out, the longer it'll take.
Mortal cost.
And the mortal cost. Commissioner?
What year do you project that we'll start receiving some water?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two?
Yep.
That's, that's late twenty-two, right?
Very last.
So.
This time of twenty-two.
If it pushes into twenty-three, it might be early twenty-three, is what they're telling you, but right now it's December twenty-two.
And do we have any other towns outside of Enid then?
No.
Any other towns that we're gonna supply water to?
Not at this time. We've had some entities with some interest, but that's all it's been passing interest.
And if, and if any of them decide to, uh, jump on board, will it slow down the process of us getting water?
No. Nope. Um, you know, the, and the standard story to anybody who's wanting to hook on is you gotta have a tee, backflip preventer, pressure reducer, depending on where you're at, a meter and a secure vault. That's what you gotta have. From there, it's yours. And you can drop those in pretty quick as you're going by. And if you have to cut one in, that's a little more of a challenge, um, but that's our cost.
Anyone else? Thank you. Item four, discuss Benny's Barn proposal to purchase twenty acres that the barn is leasing from the city.
Yeah, this is a proposal that we received from Benny's Barn. We've looked at it for a while, talked to him, and I think the best way to move forward is just to have Clint and Chip come and talk about it, so that's why they're.
A lot more fun than water and a lot cooler than casinos, so. I put a little, I think you guys got emailed most of this. The top is just a summary that I put together for you. Here you go, Mayor.
Thank you. It's underneath that white out there, Clint, the bigger number?
Well, the wrong number. But we fixed it. So, um, basically Benny's Barn leases now a hundred and sixty acres from the city, uh, where they run their, um, their equine therapy program. Um, I'm here not just as their legal counsel, but also as a board member. I'm the treasurer of, of Benny's Barn and we're real excited about, um, this opportunity. So we leased the whole hundred and sixty acres from the, from the city now and basically from the beginning of the lease arrangement, we have been beyond capacity. Uh, we have way more need for services in the community than we have room to provide. And also the current facility just places some restriction on the amount of services we can provide. It's not heated or cooled. And so the summer, when we have kind of our biggest need for services, because kids are out of school, um, we can provide kind of the least amount of services just because when, when it's too hot, we just can't have kids and their own horses. And so, um, our plan, and we've already started kind of the fundraising, is to build an indoor riding facility, um, at the existing location. Obviously, um, I'm not going to let the program do that and build it on city property. Um, and, and the cool thing about why we're here today is we're not here to ask for money, we're here to give you money. So we want to build an indoor facility somewhere on this twenty acre track that we proposed to purchase. Just if anybody's ever been out to the property, just to orient you, this is the back of the barn right here. Um, this is the road, uh, which is, is that Forty Second or Route?
Yes.
Route. So this is Route. This is where you come in. Um, the existing house is right here and this is the existing, uh, west boundary line. And then that is the tree line.
That's an existing fence line of a boundary right there.
Right, and there's a, the city owns property back on through here, but this is kind of a good fence line breaking point. This tree line is where the, um, the, the creek starts, where the water dumps in from the treatment facility, just to kind of orient you as to what we're looking at. And so what we propose to do is to purchase this twenty acres from the city so we can build our indoor riding facility, um, on the property. Just to kind of give you guys an, an idea of what we've done to the property since we've been in possession of it. We've invested well over a hundred thousand dollars of just cash improvements into the real property and the existing structures. The barn's basically been completely gutted and rebuilt. Um, we've done work in the fields, we've done work on the fences, we've done work on the roads, we've done work on the house. We've invested over a hundred thousand dollars of hard cash into the facility. Um, we have riders that come in from a five-state area. And it's not just kids. We've expanded programs to, uh, we provide veteran, we have a veteran program, both riding, horse training, and then training them to be instructors and that is growing at a faster rate even than the, the, uh, initial program. And so the program is growing, the space isn't. Um, and so we need to expand and we need to start. We've already got some match grants set up. We need to raise the money, um, to expand. And so we're proposing to purchase this twenty acre track from the city for ten thousand dollars. Um, the basis for that number is, it, it also takes into account the money that we've already invested in, in the in the property, but then also the existing house that is out there, um, has been neglected, um, for a long time. And I would almost.
Is it included in the twenty acres?
It is in the twenty acres and, and, um, it's been neglected long enough that I would almost call it close to abandoned. And so it's, it's really, it's more of a liability, I think, to the city and to us than it is a benefit. And so, um, it's currently got some mold issues. It's got, uh, wildlife intrusion issues. The, there was a partial kind of deconstruction done by the city that was never finished that kind of allowed for some critters to get in there and some water to get in there. But, so we're taking into account the fact that we are either gonna have to spend a lot of money on, uh, basically re-vamping the house. The other issue is it's not ADA compliant, which is a problem, an expensive problem. And so we know that we're also accepting that expensive problem. And so we're either going to have to undertake a project to revamp and bring up to standards the house or demolish the house. Probably more than likely demolish the house and that will be, um, the location of the, of the new indoor facility. And, and so we've taken all of those numbers into account, um, in the proposed purchase price that we, that we provide. We have been leasing the property also for
Four years.
Four years.
This will be our fourth year.
Fourth year and we pay thirteen hundred dollars a month to the city.
Encumbered inside the gray area there?
Yes, yes.
Is that an eighty into forty?
No, that's twenty.
Well, this is just twenty acres.
No, no, no.
Yeah.
The entire property's about one six.
The entire property is a quarter section. It's a quarter section. It's a hundred and sixty acres.
Hundred and forty.
No, so there'll be a hundred and forty left. If we purchase twenty, there'll be a hundred and forty left. And it's not gonna really chop it up very bad because this is the existing west boundary line and then the creek starts right there. There's already an existing fence line, so we're not worrying, we're not creating any landlock areas. We tried to, to take that into account. The other thing that's very important is that we should not affect, now, we're gonna, i- if we move forward, we're gonna go to the expense of getting a, a full-on survey. Um, but based on what we have determined here, there should not be any impact to existing city pipelines. The, the Coke pipeline runs up closer into this area and crosses the property.
I assure you guys, it really comes, comes across here and this fence line right here, what we're talking about, is about, oh, ninety to a hundred and twenty feet off of any, even the easement of the existing water line that was put in by Coke.
And we actually helped when, we were in possession of the property when Coke came through and put that pipeline in. And we were able to negotiate with them to get them to, rather than pay us money, put some more money into the property. They built some new fences, um, they repaired some roads, um, and so we were able to help kind of improve the property through that project a little bit too. But it shouldn't have any impact on existing utilities. It shouldn't have any impact on existing city uses. The city uses this road and to access the, the creek area down here, our property line will be, um, north of there, so there'll be no ingress or egress impact on the city. And basically what it's gonna allow us to do is turn Enid into kind of a destination for horse therapy, um, veteran therapy programs and just continue to expand on the momentum that we already have. Um, and people are coming in from all over and the phone rings every day. And we hate telling people we don't have space, we don't have the facilities. And, and the good news is, is we've got donors that, that want to fund this program. We just need a place to build it. And this pro, this property's been great for us. We've built, everybody knows that's where we are, at least I hope that's everybody knows where we are. We had an event out there Saturday, kind of our Christmas open house annually, um, and we had, I believe, over a thousand people out there, um, on Saturday. And so, um, it's a great place for us and I think this is a win-win for us and the city.
I have another question.
Yes.
Have you talked to the county commissioners about paving that road?
We haven't, but we certainly would like to.
Have you thought about it?
Yeah, we have thought about it a lot.
People that are gonna make people in from out of town, they don't wanna get choked on dirt.
Talking more about even a chip seal, like a chip, more of like a chip and seal, just for cost effectiveness, to talk to the county.
To get rid of the dust, period.
Yeah, and, and luckily Forty Second is gravel, um, and so you can come in off of market and you can, you, you just have to be on dirt from Forty Second to the house, which is a little over, a little over a quarter of a mile.
I went the wrong way.
Do what?
I went the wrong way.
Oh, yeah. You did go the wrong way. So if you come down market and turn on Forty Second, then you pop out right here at this corner and you only have this much dirt road.
What, what are you wanting to do with the other hundred and forty acres? It looks like you're willing to lease it for a pretty minimal annual cost.
Well, at that point, it will just be pasture. And so that's really, that's a good question, Ben. That's, we wanna enter to a long-term lease for the remaining property that we already lease. Um, and that's pretty commensurate with what a pasture lease in the area would be. And so that's where that number comes from. That's right in what the market range is for a pasture lease. And to answer your question as to what we're doing with it, the same thing we do now. Um, how many horses do we have, Chip?
Twenty-seven.
So we've got twenty-seven horses that roam this area, um, and eat that grass and then also. Right, there's no cultivated ground. It's just pasture. And, and actually, I would say probably only about a little over half of it is actually good pasture because the creek runs through there. There's some timber that runs through there. There's a lot of uneven ground, a lot of inaccessible ground. But basically, um, use it for grazing and then we are also able to, uh, do a little bit of a hay crop every year to help feed, um, throughout the winter. So that number that we're, that we're offering is, is right in the market for what a pasture lease would be. And we would like that to be a long-term lease, um, just because this twenty acre track doesn't work, um, without a long-term lease on the rest, so. Any other questions? In your packet there, you'll see the, the, kind of the more nuts and bolts specific proposal that we sent to Gerald, uh, in September with more of the, the legal talk. I will tell you that we are offering, if the city would like that, to do a right of first refusal on the property, because I know there obviously is a reason that the city purchased it in the first place. So that way, if, if a casino comes in and, and offers us a bunch of money, we would have to offer it to you first, so, yeah.
That's apples and oranges.
Yeah. So, so, uh, we are offering a right of first refusal if that's what the city, um, would like to run with the property. And we're also, you know, we're open to all kinds of suggestions. We just really need to own some property to be able to build a facility to grow, so.
I think it's a, it's a good proposal. I think that, uh, the intent tonight is to get it in front of you and kind of get your thoughts about it so we can finalize an agreement to bring back to you at some point soon for approval. I think you talked about doing a survey. We may have to look at, depending on what part of, I think there's two or three lots there and I, we'd have to check the size. Or maybe a lot split or something required, maybe not.
There shouldn't be a lot split. It's gonna be big enough. It shouldn't require a lot split.
Well, we, I think we'd want to retain an access easement across the front twenty to the back hundred and forty if you ever stop leasing it. So we could, if for some reason, you know, as you.
Sure, and that's.
That kind of detail, but I, you know.
That's something we could definitely do, but you're gonna have access, all of the access to the back comes through here anyways. There's a road that comes down through here and crosses. There's a kind of a low water crossing of the creek and that's how the whole, that's actually the only access to the back of the property anyways.
Well, if you can make it work, it's a great project. You do that.
Yeah, and what we wanted to do is just get it in front of you guys, answer your questions, and if there was, um, some interest, then put together more of a, a, an official proposal that I can get to the city attorney with a, with a proposed contract, um, deed language. And then obviously, before we went to the expense of getting a full survey, we wanted to kind of gauge the interest, so.
Sure. Sounds great.
Any other questions? Do what?
Good luck getting the county to pave your road.
Yeah.
They're not far away. Knock on their door.
I know, yeah. We'll have somebody else knock on there.
Thank you.
I'm associated with a lot of the developmentally disabled population as well as the veteran population. I really appreciate the work that you guys have been doing.
Well, that's all Chip, so. Yeah.
Really need to be communities.
Well, thank you. All right.
Keep after it, Chip. Dammie, can you do your proj, project in six minutes?
Yes. It's pretty short, sweet.
Clock's running.
So a few months ago, we were presented with some issues that the sanitation department was having with some, um, egregious usages of our poly carts, I guess. People overflowing them, not using them properly, et cetera, et cetera. We saw all the pictures and were convinced that there was a remedy necessary for them, um, to, you know, take care of some of that stuff. So we voted to implement, um, some fines and some things like that and give them a way to fix. So we voted to implement some fines and some things like that and give them a way to fix those problems they were having. However, some of the problems that are occurring from this, I think, are overreaching and ridiculous in so far as people that get their, put their carts out like they're supposed to, four feet apart, follow all the rules. And if a car comes and parks on the street in front of those cars, in front of their carts, if a car that doesn't belong to them parks on a public street, they should not be fined for that. And that, they, not fined, they got a warning, but the next time they would be fined for it or however many times later, they would be fined for it. And to me, that was not what this was meant to do. Because if, if less we want to close down the streets on, from parking on trash days, which other cities do that and it's a big stupid pain, which I do not suggest we do...
Suggest we close streets, Tammy?
Do not suggest that our citizens stand in their yard and go, no, you can't park here today, we can't do that. So I don't know how to fix it, but I think that giving law-abiding citizens warnings and making them angry is not the way to fix the situation. It's, they can't control who parks on a public street. And so I, it's an issue that's come up in my ward and I think that we need to, you know, stop doing it, use some common sense and, or figure out another way to fix it.
Well, I will say that we very rarely utilize that now. There was a time here a few months ago, we did give out quite a few.
Right.
But we looked at that...
And that's silly too, and that's why we quit doing them.
Well, I wouldn't correct, I wouldn't characterize that, but, but I understand. And we realized that's not the most productive way, way to approach that. So what we do now in almost every instance is what you said, we, we put a yellow sticker on there trying to communicate with the person. And I completely agree with you that we can't control when a customer puts out their poly cart who parks there and all that stuff. But it's the same way for my solid waste driver when they show up. They can't control who's parking there, whose car it is. All they know is there's something there. They still pick it up, but to pick it up, they have to get out by definition. Otherwise, they would just use the automated system. So maybe we need to communicate more clearly that these, maybe change the terminology from warning. It's really trying to communicate, we're still going to pick it up. Because if we don't pick it up, they're going to call us, we're going to go back and pick it up. So we're wanting to, we're wanting to provide the service.
But you're still putting, you're still putting, you're still putting the burden on the homeowner that's already followed the law by, by giving them any kind of warning. They can't help who parks there, so maybe ticket the car. Ticket the car if a car parks in front of a trash can. I don't know what to tell you, but if I put my trash out like I'm supposed to and I'm following the rules and I'm doing the four feet apart and I'm putting it on the curb and I'm doing everything you ask me to do and I get a warning, that's not right. Because I'm not the one that parked a car in front of the trash can.
How do you want us to handle it?
I don't know, but giving the homeowner that's followed the rules a warning or a ticket of any kind is not the right way to do it. Because they haven't done anything wrong and you are penalizing them for not doing anything wrong.
There's no penalty.
Well, but I think the...
No $4 penalty.
It doesn't matter, when somebody gets a red sticker on their cart, it still angers them whether there's money attached to it or not.
Well, but I think the other problem, Tammy, Tammy, is that you, the person driving the truck doesn't have any way of knowing whether that car was there five minutes ago or not.
Right, they don't.
But, but...
That's the point, they, nobody does.
But if, if the person is the, isn't aware that, of the space that's needed, if, if the person did park their car there and then put the cart there, we need to communicate with them somehow, don't you think?
I think that we need to communicate with the person that parks in front of trash cans. Because so basically we're saying, basically what you guys are telling me is, our law-abiding citizens, it doesn't matter what they do to follow the rules, they're going to get penalized for it. That's what you're saying out loud right now in this room.
No, Tammy, that is in no way what I'm saying. I said communicate. I never said the word penalized. I think there's a distinction between the two.
Well, sticking a red tag that says warning on it is indicating, it's not right.
What is it tied to?
Sure, I don't think that a, a red tag is a, is a penalty. We can change the color if that helps, but I don't think the, I think we've got to be able to communicate with folks and, and because it could be that person just isn't aware and they will park their cars somewhere different on trash day. And I think there is a reasonable, I think there is a reasonable...
It's not the people parking their cars in front of them.
Okay, but, but Tammy, that's a little bit...
It's not the people parking their cars in front of their own trash cans, it's people using the public street that they have a right to park on too, that's the problem.
Back me up, back up a minute here. I think it's irrational to say there's no connection between a car parked in front of a house and, and the person who lives there. It is more likely than not that a car parked in front of a house, probably pretty close.
Not necessarily, because on a lot of these streets that don't have driveways or don't have anywhere to park, I mean, they might be visiting someone two houses down, that's not the person who live there, that's not their problem.
I, I'm only suggesting that there's probably...
And people that, who's, who own the trash cans already know better than parking, they're not in front of their own trash cans.
Well, I, I think that there are probably people who don't know. And I'm suggesting that there is probably a rational connection between the car parked in front of the house and the house, maybe it's your neighbor saying, would you please not park too close on...
Let's leave it on the agenda for our next city, next study session.
Just one, one final comment on that. Why don't, why, instead of putting a sticker on the, on the container, why don't we put the sticker underneath the windshield wiper on the car?
That's exactly what I think would make more sense.
And whoever it wants, and it's not a ticket, it's a warning, the same as it's a warning on the, on the deal.
So hey, please don't park in front of the trash cans.
But then it doesn't matter, I mean, if it's a guy that, if he's parking in front of his own house, he knows, he gets the idea.
Right.